Good evening. I would like to call the December 11th meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, moving on to roll call 1.03. At this time, Josiah, we have our student board member is not here, and Director Hallahan is not present. Okay, moving on to 1.04, the adoption of the agenda. The agenda has been distributed in your board packet. If there are no objections, the agenda will be approved by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, the board packet or the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Now, we are moving on to 2.01. We have the oath of office for all of the newly elected school board members. And I will turn it over to Dr. Kus Sibula. I think this is history in the making.
This is history, yes. This is exciting to swear in five board members. So I think to do this and make sure the family has some good photo ops, we'll ask you all to stand. I'll go up to the podium. And then we'll go one at a time to, but you'll all come forward. And then we'll swear you in one at, one at a time. You'll take your oath. Does that sound good? Isn't this great? There's no manual on swearing in five people at the same time. All right, let's go. All right, um, I have directions to start with our newest member. So Mr. McLean, can you come on over here? All right, so please repeat after me. I want to say your name. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Oak Harbor School District Number 201, Island County State of Washington to the best of my ability. All right, round of applause, huh? Congratulations. Do you guys want a picture with Dad? Yeah, all right, come on up. Woo, there's one shoe. All right. Aww, look at that. All right, thank you, congratulations. All right, Director Goble, come on up. Are you ready? Okay, so I state your name.
I, Lynn Goble.
Do hereby solemn, solemnly swear
I do hereby solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support
and the Constitution of the State of Washington and will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Oak Harbor School District Number 201. All right, Island County State of Washington to the best of my ability. Oh, congratulations. Uh huh, uh huh. We have family members here that want a picture with you. They came dressed for the event. Oh, there. All right, Director Oz, here we go. I state your name. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Oak Harbor School District Number 201. 201, okay, good. Island County State of Washington to the best of my ability. All right, congratulations, yay. Director Tash. All right, you ready? Do you want to just, by memory, do you know it? I state your name.
I, Nicole Tash.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Oak Harbor School District 201. The duties of Island County State of Washington to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Director Tash. All right, you guys want to come up? I think it's family photo time. Do you want me to pretend I'm one?
Yes. I wouldn't know.
One, two, three, two. All right, congratulations. And Director Jensen, come on up. All right, you ready? Okay, do you know it by now? Okay, ready, one.
I, Sharon Jensen. Do solemnly swear
Support the Constitution. Island County State of Washington. Woo, congratulations. All right, can we get a picture of all the new board directors and our student reps in the front? That would be lovely. Come on up.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. The items in this consent agenda that the board wishes to discuss. Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt the consent agenda. At this, oh my goodness, guess what I did? I was so excited to move on. We need to do the board organization. Let's go back. We're going to do a rerun, okay? So, all right, I even have notes. I'm pulling them out. Here we go. All right, we are on 2.02. In accordance with the School Board Policy 1210, the annual organization and elections of officers and Policy 1220, the board officers and the duties of the board members, I will be asking nominations for the following positions. The floor is now open for the nomination of School Board President.
I nominate Lynn Goble.
I nominate Lynn Goble.
That's a second, so I have a nomination and a seconded. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing that there are no other nominations, is there any discussion? No discussion, okay. Hearing none, we will now call for a roll call vote. Superintendent Dr. Kus Sibula will now take a roll call vote.
Please respond to the nomination of Lynn Goble for the position of School Board President by saying, eh, I, eh, I don't even know. Nay, eh, hey, after I call your name, Director Oz.
Aye.
Director Tash.
Aye.
Director McLean.
Aye.
Director Jensen.
Aye.
Director Goble.
Aye.
And for our non-voting student board representatives, Josiah.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Oh, how we go. Lynn Goble has received the majority of the votes. May I have a motion in a second to accept the results of the vote?
Move to accept the results.
Second.
Is, it has been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fine. All those opposed? Well, I'm just going to say thank you very much. It has been an honor to serve you guys. And I'm very deeply grateful for your faith in me to do this for another year. And hopefully, having all of you at my side, it makes this a enjoyable and an amazing job to represent all of you. Thank you very much. Now, I'm moving on to, the floor is now open for the nomination of the School Board Vice President.
I nominate Jessica Oz.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded to nominate Jessica Oz for the Vice President. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will now move on to the roll call vote. By Superintendent Dr. Kus Sibula will now take a roll call vote.
President Goble, nomination of Jessica for Vice President.
Aye.
Director Jensen.
Aye.
Director McLean.
Aye.
Director Tash.
Aye.
Director Oz.
Aye.
And for our non-voting student board representatives, Josiah.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Jessica Oz, or Director Oz, has received the majority of the votes. May I have a motion to accept the results of the vote?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second to, for Director Oz to be our Vice President. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I am pleased, oh, excuse me, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I am pleased to announce that Director Oz will be the Vice President for the Oak Harbor School Board for the 2023-24 school year. All right, thank you, guys. Now, we will move on to, the next open position is our WIAA, Washington Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association position. This does not require a roll call vote. Are there any nominations for the WIA representative?
Nominate Sharon Jensen.
Is there any discussion? All right, it has been, do we need a second? Yes, let's, let's do a second on that.
Second.
We have a first and a second to have Director Jensen fill the role as the WIA representative. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Director Jensen will be serving the Oak Harbor Public Schools as the WIA representative. Thank you, guys. We are really, I think, going to get an A+ one of these days in our Robert Rolls of Order and how well we can do this, okay? I, I'm watching other school boards, you know, they have a parliamentarian. So I really think, Ms. Williams, did we do okay? Okay, all right, so, yes, it's very important, but, yeah. So anyway, I just want to thank all of you for your participation and helping us through this process. Now, we can move on to that consent agenda. Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that the board wishes to discuss further? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the, whoops. Ms., Ms. Jensen?
Pardon me, could you please repeat your question?
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that the board wishes to discuss further? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted as published. At this time, we will move on to 5.01, which is our Student Representative Report. Which one of you wants to go first? All right, Josiah.
Good evening. Welcome to the Student Representative Report. At OHHHS this week, expect, oh, tomorrow, tomorrow night is the Oak Harbor High School Choir Concert at 7:00 PM. And Thursday is the Oak Harbor Band Concert at 7:00 PM. Throughout this week, expect to hear good things from Boys Swim, Boys Basketball, Girls Basketball, Girls Wrestling, and Boys Wrestling. I know that the boys and the girls basketball team have come to a very good start of their season. At Northwoodby Middle School, there will be Winter Social on Wednesday at 2:30. And the Winter Music Assembly on Friday from 9:20 to 10:20, so maybe pop in for that. And the Oak Harbor High School Jazz Band will be doing our annual town tour this Wednesday. So hopefully, catch some of you guys somewhere around town. Thank you.
Director Cash, I'd like, has a question.
I'm so sorry, I didn't catch the Northwoodby Social. Do you said next Wednesday or this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday for both 7th and 8th graders?
Should be, yes. I have the calendar.
Thank you, I missed that.
Yes, December 13th.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, welcome to the Student Representative Report Part Two. For the choir concert tomorrow, we have a rehearsal today in nine minutes that I have to go to, but it's okay, I'm going a little bit late. It's a free, open rehearsal, so anyone can come. Tomorrow, the concert is a $3 entry and doors open at 6:30. The town tour, that jazz band is going on, choir is also going on, Harbor and Treble Choir. So we're going around to all the music assemblies that are happening at the schools. The Northwoodby one that Josiah mentioned, and also O-Hi. And there's a winter sing-along that, at Oak Harbor Elementary that we're also going to be going to. O-Hi is also doing their Polar Pals gift shop that has been going on for a while now, where students can buy gifts for their loved ones. And then the other thing I had is something that happened on December 1st. Home Connections had a slants, so a social and a dance, and they did cookie decorating. They made snowflakes out of paper and they had hot cocoa. And I actually emailed Mr. Evans, the principal, and I asked if I could stop by and say hi to the students. And he said yes, so I got to go and I met a lot of students and I danced a lot. And I decorated cookies and made snowflakes. And then I asked if I could speak to them really quick before I left. So they, they lent me a microphone and I just got to introduce myself because I know that before I applied to this position, I didn't even really know what the school board did and I didn't know that there were student representatives. And I got a lot of applause, so now they all know that I'm their student representative and they can, they all know and they can come to me for anything. That's it.
Great job, you guys. And I love it that you're both in red. Was that planned? Okay, good.
Okay, yes.
5.02, visitors? Do we have any visitors? No visitors this evening. Now, moving on to 6.01, the Superintendent's Report.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, Maggie, for giving your report and then running off. So the dash, we appreciate, we know you have to go and thank you so much. Look forward to the concert. I would like to, we do have a visitor, but not technically a visitor to give public comment. So I do want to do two shout-outs tonight, that is not on our agenda. But, and I know I will embarrass this, embarrass this person, but I want to say thank you to, she's already giving me daggers, Vicki Williams for 31 years of service. she's already giving me daggers, Vicky Williams, for 31 years of service in public education as a business manager.
I know.
I can feel the daggers right now. I know she's not excited about praise, or public praise, but I honestly want to say thank you, Vicky, for all that you've done for the Oak Harbor community. For years, you've led us through the storms, as well as the sunshine. So thank you for being committed to making sure that we are wise investors of our, our students, and our communities trust in us. So thank you to Vicky. And with that, I'd also like, she's a hard person to replace, by the way, having all that institutional knowledge, so we've arranged, um, for a transition for her and her replacement that you saw on the agenda tonight, so, uh, welcome to Amber Porter, who will be our new, uh, Vicky. Uh, so congratulations to Amber. You want to stand up? Yay, let's give her a big round of applause. Uh, so, big shoes to fill, but we are confident, um, that we have found the right person to step into the shoes that Vicky is leaving behind, so thank you to both of them. Uh, so superintendent's report, I'm gonna make it a little quicker tonight, I'm gonna run through it, but board members, you have your blue folder in front of you, and that's the superintendent evaluation. And so I have marked accordingly the slides, so that you'll be able to follow along. We've had a lot of activity over the past couple weeks, um, gearing up for several things, but many of these align to not only the superintendent goals, but the board goals and the work that we're doing to, um, build our strategic plan and common vision and mission for the district. So a couple things coming up with strategic planning. Uh, we had Dr. Campbell join us, and some of you were on it, I think, um, Director Jensen, thank you for joining our community forum, as well as President Goble. We had a lot of participation, not as many as we had on the first two. Uh, we also know it's a busy season for holidays, and shopping, and concerts, and community events. So we met with our core planning team, and I'm gonna give you a little sneak preview. It is draft, but I'll give you a little sneak preview of some of the work that they've been doing. Uh, we also collected all the data information, that's our next steps. We actually had so much information from our data, from our parents, our students, um, and our staff, that we've had to ask for an extension, because it's, it's a lot of data to sort through. So we will be working on collating that this week with our district team, to get all of that information together, where we'll start to see some themes emerge from the survey data that we heard from staff, families, as well as students. And then, uh, February 20th, we're asking for, uh, folks to sign up. We've already had 49 staff members. These are folks that are in our organization already, so, um, really looking at a lot of instructional leadership. So that's taking all the themes, all of the data, and then building those pillars in the strategic plan, which is similar to like an ends report that you might have heard from the WASDA conference, where a lot of strategic plans are aligned to the ends or the board outcomes. That's the work that this committee will start doing. They'll start putting things in buckets and pillars in which we start to grow and develop our common alignment, not only alignment with the work that we do every day, but also, how do we support that fiscally? And how do we support that professional development-wise? And then how do we support that in our language and our conversations around the growth that we're doing? And, how do we measure that? So that work will be happening, happening February 20th. Um, so I, I can't have more than two board members, but if you are interested in that, it's in the evening, I think it starts at 6:30, I'm looking to Sarah. Um, please email me, so that I can keep track of who's interested. Oh, 3:30 to 6:30. And then, this week, with our administrators and our leadership team, including our directors, we will be working with Dr. Campbell, and she will be doing a virtual session and doing the theory of action with our administrative team, so, very excited. So, when we started working with our core team, every time we meet with this big team in the community, we have just under, I think, 78 people in, on that team, and it's, you know, business owners, students are on that, staff members, uh, and, uh, people that live in our community and contribute to the growth of our students. So we, every time we meet, the team meets, and we take all this information, and they have about two hours to synthesize it, and then give feedback to it. So that's what you'll see here, and this is a big draft. Um, so this was really looking at some of our core values, and you can see how the team worked to define some of those pillars that you'll start to see from the February 20th team is, what, what is academic excellence, and what do we believe? Inclusion and belonging and collaboration, and then how do you measure those things? So tho, those will be the goals that we'll start working through, the pillars in our strategic plan. We're also continuing to work on our MTSS system, which is multi-tiered systems of support. This is not just for behavior, this is for academics as well, as we know, those go hand in hand. So one of the things that I'm really excited about is, when we start looking at our behaviors, we started dipping our toe into playbase K, and what does that really look like? So how do we meet students where they're at, and students don't come to Oak Harbor prepared for Oak Harbor, but we meet each and every child where they are at when they come to Oak Harbor Public Schools. So our K team has some designated leaders at each site, each elementary site, and they were able to go up and meet with, um, a former employee of mine, Nina Baloo. She's amazing, and she's worked at the state level, as well as, um, a good friend of mine, Kristy Dominguez, who is the superintendent in Ferndale. And they are key leaders in the state around early learning initiatives, and they have written the early learning playbook at the state level, both of them. So our team went up to Ferndale, and they were able to visit classrooms, observe practices, meet with teachers, and as you know, this is not a top-down playbase. This is just, let's dip our toe in it and develop it here in Oak Harbor that works best for our students. So listen to the experts, go observe and see, and then come back and apply it and build it as we go. So, very excited about the team. In fact, I was talking to, um, our Hillcrest Principal, Paula, and she was saying, on the way back, her folks in the vehicle on the way back, they were already redoing all of their lessons in planning on the way back, so, that's a long drive back from Ferndale, so they had a couple days' worth of planning. So we want to thank Ferndale School District for hosting us. The next support you'll see is our MTSS model. We have a district-level team, and then key stakeholders in each position at, at each school across our district, so this is not just a high school or middle school thing. It's really building it from preschool all the way up to 21. And this, uh, week, when students had no school, would, did you have no school, Josiah? And hang out? Sleep in? Good job. You didn't sleep in. Very impressed. Uh, while students were not at school, our staff were working pretty hard. And some of the things that they're continuing to work through is our work around MTSS, and what does that look like? So, I'm excited to say that good results in our district. We met with, um, our O-Hi Principal and Assistant Principal today, uh, Mr. Lundstrom and I were there, and they could not stop talking about the energy the staff had around, the work that they have done in their building with MTSS. So really aligning our practices in the district, what does that really look like when we talk about, um, making a welcoming environment for students, and engaging at a high level of academic learning as well? So you can't work hard for somebody if you don't know they care about you. So some of the models that we are continuing to work on is what we call SERVE model, like we do in all things education, we love acronyms. And so SERVE really means starting intentionally, so how do you start and greet kids? And we talk, we talk about four at the door. Engage them in the relationship, respond to them with empathy, and then, what are the values that we consistently practice as adults? Is it just something we demand from kids? Are we actually modeling and practicing that ourselves? And then how do we make sure when students leave, they're, um, we're doing it with intentionality, so that we're not waiting at the door for the bell to ring, wasting 10 minutes, but we're really thinking intentionally about what we want students to leave with and walk, walk home, or leave the day thinking about. And so, some of the other models is what we learned about. Some of you have been in our instructional reviews, and you've seen our administrators talk about the prompt method, and using our behavior flow chart. So again, this is all connecting together all these tools that we can put in teachers' toolboxes, and how they can make it their own, based on the culture and their expertise that each building has, but the consistency and coherence also across our system. Standard six, we've been working on, again, we talked a little bit here tonight about the survey data and how extremely important that was. And it, it's interesting, because you'll hear in a little bit, we're also going around and talking about, um, budget reduction, and really getting input from directors and principals. And again, when we hear student voice, and staff voice, and parent voice, and the themes that emerge through it, it really, shy of a strategic plan, elevates the work that people feel is valued and important, and makes sense. One of the things we want to be careful about when we think about reductions is not just throwing away something because it's convenient, but how do you stick with something, and it's the stick-with-it-ness, that we go deep with professional learning, deep with support, and deep with consistency and fidelity, as well as measuring and monitoring how we're doing. Um, so in order to continue to talk to our community about strategic planning and the work that we're doing, and receiving feedback, we go out and about. So this week, we're out to the chamber, um, and doing our presentation, and bringing that on the road. So it'll be similar to our state of schools, and it'll be tailored for the groups of people that we are working with. Um, we're also in the process of budget reductions. Welcome, Amber. But we are building our model, and very excited about it, and, um, the expertise that the business, um, department has around it, and then moving forward with how do we take that and really dig deeper into our budget reductions. And we know it won't be easy, because when we talk about budget reductions, we talk about people, and that's a really hard conversation to have. We've talked about it here at the board meeting before. So I just want to remind you that we are working on our OR process, where we're going, and we're meeting, um, two-on-one, to talk to each director, assistant director, and building principal, and labor management groups about that OR process. What's optional, what's required, and what's something that we allocate across the system, and we have coherence on. I am excited to talk about construction. Ready to flip gears? That's what happens when you have 15 goals. Um, so, construction, we are moving right along. A couple things that, um, you should know is our value engineering. We are spot-on for Crescent Harbor, and working to push that DOD funding forward. So we are wrapping up the grants for the Department of Defense this week. Um, the, where we fall short a little bit, still is our hand-in-hand. It's a tricky site, it's a complex building, it's lots of programs, and because a lot of these plans were done a couple years ago, and price of things have increased, especially when we think about construction and the dynamic of that building, and all the needs that needs to encompass that building, it just gets increasingly challenging, and yet we have to do it, because we have two grants to live in. So we're really still, um, in the phases of the value engineering, as well as really looking at our work around the soil testing and the geothermal testing, and now there's conversations about geophysics. So we're really, still, that site is, is so new to us, that we really want to do our due diligence when we continue to move through that site. So here's some sneak previews of the front of hand-in-hand Home Connection. This is when you say, ooh la la. Thank you. Pretty exciting, um, so, we, when we think about value engineering, for example, some of the value and engineering things are, do we need as extensive landscaping, or do we minimize? Do we need, um, covered areas to have kids come into the building? That's an expense. So these are the things when we talk about value engineering. Anything cosmetic, all the way down to structural, do we need that deep of a retention pond? Can we do a retention wall? Does that save us money, or do we do a pond, and that saves us money? So really getting into the specificity about value engineering. Sarah and Brian Hunt have been working on our teams. Many people drive by and say, why is there a fence there? Why are there? Uh, people are a little confused, especially about the hand-in-hand site. So we have some signage coming, and we are making sure that we, um, do not have a lot of pictures yet, because again, we're value engineering, and we're not at that level. But on January 29th, at our board meeting, NAC and CSG will be here, and they're very excited, because they're working really hard for our school board and our community, to do visual walkthroughs, walkthrough model, so that they can share with you the interior of both buildings, which I think is pretty incredible. Crescent Harbor, you'll see a good example of value engineering that we talked about. If I hit this red, will it show me a clicker, or no? Is it gonna jump slides? Ah, see? That's why I asked. Uh, so on value engineering, a good example of the, the match funding, the 20%, you can see on the far right, that overhang is actually our existing covered play area, so that was $300 and some thousand dollars worth of value. That, for that $300,000, we get a, uh, we, we get matched by four, right? So for every dollar, it's $4, and so that's pretty incredible when you think about that unique opportunity with the Department of Defense grant. So that is a good example of how we keep a structure, work around it, and save money, but not only that, but that's our matching fund. So that's part of our matching 20%. The government gives us 80%. So this is the work that we've been doing to value engineer. Another thing that we are working on, and this is a nice opportunity to merge the two. We've talked about the study and survey, and the grant through OSPI, through the ICE Coast System. Uh, Sarah and her team just put out a capital facilities advisory committee launch to our community. So if you know anyone who's interested, we put it out on social media. We, um, would really like to work with people that are interested. We got a list of people from our last bond feedback, and we've been working with those folks to see if they're willing to commit, and, uh, moving forward with our long-range, uh, work for facilities. So, if you know anybody, please make sure they reach out to Sarah Foy, or Dwight Lundstrom, or Brian Hunt. And then tonight, we have our work-study, and we're really, um, gonna dig into some of our policies and procedures, especially the Thousand Series that pertain to the board. And with every new board member, it's a new board, so we're very excited to work into that, um, tonight. Any questions?
Director Jensen?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned, I think, that the Chamber, uh, presentation is this week. What day and time? Do you guys know?
Sarah?
Thursday.
Thursday, where and what time? 11:30 at the Chamber? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. No, it's at the Elks Club. Elks Club.
11:30 at the Elks Club. And anyone is welcome?
You need to get tickets ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Alright, thank you for that report. We will move on now to 10.01, Business Service Board Policy Updates, first reading.
Good evening. Tonight, we're gonna review, um, several board policies, that these are not from WASDA. These are policies that internally, we have requested to have updated. So, I'm gonna go through the gifts and donations, the charge cards, reimbursements for travel expenditures, and then the food and beverage consumptions. Some of these are gonna be both policy and procedure. The procedures don't have to be board-approved, but for convenience, we always conclude both of them. So on the gifts and donations, first of all, I'd like to let you know that I worked with, um, Ray Cohn, the director of the CTE program, Christina Merritt, the principal at Oak Harbor Elementary, and Sarah Lucero, the principal at Oak Harbor, or Olympic View Elementary. When we reviewed these, the main reason for adjusting this one was to limit the number of clothing articles that we are purchasing for our staff, and to define when and where we are purchasing those as a district. So out of department budgets, out of building budgets, we're just going to limit overall how many that we are going to purchase for people. We will make them available, that they can purchase, and usually get a pretty, a good deal, but as far as using district funds, we are going to limit it a little bit more, and that's the purpose of the revision here. We've also added specifically some items that are just not allowed at all with donated funds. Once funds are donated to a district, they become public funds, and so all of the rules and regulations that go with it. With the charge cards, um, again, we wanted to tighten up some of the procedures, and the biggest change in this one is putting a time limit, and possibly, a little bit of a, a stick, when we have administrators that don't fill out their paperwork, and don't turn it back in. Without this, we don't really have anything that gives us any authority to say, well, I mean, we do have the authority, but this gives us a little bit more to say, okay, until you get this straightened up, you can't spend any more on those charge cards. For the travel expense, um, on the, on the policy itself, the only change was changing the, um, percentage that's available for tips. Instead of leaving it vague, we actually put a number on it at 18%. For the procedures, we added a little bit more, um, timeline in the procedures. A lot of questions that we get, because we do per diem. So per diem covers your meals. So, when are meals? We define when meals are. We define when travel occurs, and how much travel time? When do you need to leave before a meal, before the meal is authorized to be paid? Before the meal is authorized to be paid. And you can't leave early just to get the meal paid. Then we went to our food and beverage consumption. The only difference that we added to the policy is that it has to have a benefit to the district in order to purchase food. But then when we go into the procedure, we did add, again, a lot more specificity around what normal meal times are and the length of the meal, length of the meeting time in order to be able to provide food and some other just minor distinctions so that it tightens up our procedures and a little bit more. Are there any questions on the policies or procedures that we've presented for first reading?
Director Jensen?
Yes, thank you for this. I did have a couple of suggestions. One was just a little bit on minor language, on the gratuity, something like maybe up to but not exceeding 18%. If you don't have good service, I don't want someone getting 18%. And the other one is more detailed questions or thoughts related to the overall reimbursement for travel expenses. I was going to see if we could possibly, at a later time, perhaps have a chance to discuss that more.
I do know that you've passed on some questions to Dr. Cassa Bula. And I got to review them briefly before the meeting. I'm sure that if you have more detailed ones, but we'll go over those and have some answers.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Now moving on to the Legislative, 10.02, the Legislative Update.
Thank you. Friday is the big day for our legislative forum with our reps. It'll be here at the district office from 3:00 to 4:00. We're excited to tell our story and present a one-sheet that Sarah knocked out of the park with designing and quickly telling our story. The format of the event will be on an agenda so that we can clearly have a, like, an outline of how the event will smoothly run. But I'm just, I'm overwhelmed with Sarah's ability to tell a story quickly. We don't have a lot of time with our legislative reps. And this is an incredibly short session with 60 days. So there's not going to be a lot that can happen. However, what we can do is tell our story and how the decisions that they make at the legislature affect us, not only with students that are military, but island life, island cost, retention, and attraction of experienced staff members and telling them that what their, what the rulings that they have in effect and what those live numbers look like to us. So we're really excited to see them and tell them our story.
Just a quick question, Director Tesh. Will we have that agenda prior? Or we just, or will we, just when we walk in, that we'll have that agenda?
So the agenda that we had discussed on email was pretty brief. A welcome and introduction so that we can introduce all of ourselves. A brief overview of our legislative priorities in the one-sheet. And then touching base on some of those supported issue platforms that we have, those are also identified on the one-sheet as well. A Q&amp;A for them as to what's going on in the session so that they can kind of tell us about some of the bills that they are actively seeking and some of the movement that they have. It's not going to be a lot. And if they have any questions about our one-sheet and about Oak Harbor, it's really important that that's our time to be able to get back. And then obviously, closing remarks at the end so that we can thank them for their time. I spoke to a few legislative assistants. And the calendars are booking up pretty fast. And they're requesting that if we want to do something after this next session, that they're asking that we pre-book our legislative forum with them in June if we have some needs that we have this summer. So that was a nice key nugget that I got away from speaking with the LAs.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions? Just would like to thank Sarah for the publication, okay? Very much. Moving on to 12.01. This is another from the business office. It's the Resolution 2309 Oak Harbor High School Fan Account.
So this is a first reading on a resolution to set up a separate bank account for the athletic department to run GoFan. GoFan is an organization that's widely used in the state of Washington to accept payments online. We do have a forum to do that. We do have e-funds. It is cumbersome to use. Someone has to be trained to use it. And we have had people in my department who are no longer with me that have limited the number of people that can also use it. GoFan is a solution that gets around all of those items. And it is compliant with state auditors on the collection and distribution of funds, specifically in the fact that they advertise and everything is noticed on their payment page that when people are paying with their credit card, they are paying GoFan for the fee of the convenience of using a card. So everything that is collected as far as the fees goes, those are what are returned to us intact. So this is a first reading simply to make you aware. It is not to approve GoFan. What you are being asked to approve is the setting up of a bank account. The reason that we want a separate bank account is because we need the convenience to be able to balance that and to know whether it's out of balance. If we have it intermingled with all of the other funds that the district receives, it is just not manageable.
Are there any comments or questions? Director Jensen?
Yes, thank you for this. It sounds like a very convenient thing to do. I was surprised one time trying to go to an event and not having cash. Or I think I loaned some cash to a student or gave it to them so they could attend a soccer game a couple of years ago. But, so I think you answered this question. So there are no fees, if you will, for the district because the fees get passed directly to the user. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is a setup fee that is, I don't have that figure off the top of my head. It's between $600 and $800. The ASB club is actually paying for that and they have that already set aside. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? All right, moving on to 12.02. Ms. Williams, you get to stay with us.
So for the annual financial report, I want to actually direct you to the document itself. And the first one is the, the one that's called the F-196. And I'm going to go through some pages. The pages are numbered at the bottom. So on page 2 of 38, I just want to point out, there is a total at the end where they're totaling all the funds. That is for the convenience of the reader. When we do our funds, each fund is self-balancing and never, ever do we actually combine them all, okay? The next page that I want to draw your attention to is actually 19 of 38. It's our transportation vehicle fund. I want to point out how much of the fund balance that we have in there. I've made a recommendation to the superintendent that instead of financing any buses, that we actually purchase outright. And a recommendation of how many of those buses we should purchase this year. The next page that I want to draw your attention to is page 22 of 38. This is our schedule of long-term liabilities. What I wanted to point out is on the very top line, voted bonds, you notice that there's nothing left because we've paid them all off. And this is the final documentation that you'll see that those bonds have been paid off. They won't show up in any future reporting. The next page that I want to draw your attention to is pages 32 and 33. On two pages, it gives you all of the expenditures that occurred during 2223 school year. The first column is by program. And you've heard me talk about the programs before. You will see that, as an example, special ed is actually funded out of three different programs. You will look at 21, 24, and 29. In the middle columns, these are the activities. And I've talked about this before. This is who's doing it. Superintendent's office, as an example, is number 12. And the far right corner is our expenditures by object. So again, our certificated salaries, our classified salaries, benefits for both combined, and then the others that are MSOCs. So as a reminder, our salaries and expenditures make up about 88%. And that's the part that we'll need to reduce and that you'll be talking about in the future. Finally, I wanted to point out the last page, 38. This one gives all of our expenditures by each building. And it's really, really easy to say, "Okay, we're going to just compare the buildings simply by the amount that we spend." This includes the salaries. And the salaries vary widely on our certificated staff because of their education and experience. If you have a more highly educated building, they're going to cost more. So while it's good to look at the expenditures by building, understand that there's a lot more that goes into it and you really want to take a deeper dive. And it may generate some questions that you may have that are legitimate questions to ask and that we should answer. But simply looking at and comparing, you know, you know two schools are fairly close in size, Hillcrest and Crescent Harbor. Their expenditures are close, but Crescent Harbor's more. But they have slightly less students. So when you look at that, there's a lot more to the story than just the numbers that are on the page. Finally, I wanted to point out, the bottom numbers, the first one, total instructional locations, that's what's spent at the building levels, 80% of the total budget. 20% is the district office. And when I say district office, I mean all of those supports, like transportation, like facilities, and like the other departments that are in this building. Do you want to ask questions on this? Or do you want me to go on to the notes to the financial statement and then do questions at the end?
Would you like to have a question, Director Jensen?
Really quickly. Thank you, Vicki. Really, really helpful, especially that little directions through the 38 pages. I think you said page 19 for the TV app. How many buses are being recommended? I didn't see a number. You said something about a number being recommended.
What I recommended, based on the quotes that we have, was to purchase two. But the only quotes that I saw were for two diesel buses that are the larger buses. And I know that our director was looking for some other quotes. So she may come up with some different ones. And if she goes with propane buses that are smaller, they cost less, so my recommendation would change. We have about $430,000 that I would recommend that is available to spend.
We have quotes out but not received yet. So we're in the process of collecting those right now.
Okay, Director Tesh?
I know MSOCs is not fully covering some of the basic education needs that are coming forward. What is the deficit that we have of what the state provides us and then what we actually pay?
On our MSOCs? I don't have that off the top of my head. I can tell you that one of the documents that I do that is posted on our website is called our MSOC Disclosure Tool. And that one actually lays out, it's from our budget. So it lays out what the revenues are that we are, that the state is funding. And then how much we budgeted to spend in MSOCs and the amount that the district is adding to that. But I don't have that off the top of my head.
I think it is a really good key point that the state is not fully funding basic education for our Legislative Roundtable that we conduct on Friday. It would be beneficial to us to be able to show them that, you know, they fund it. They mandate a certain, you know, set of services, electricity and gas. And those things are not fully funded and covered. And so just maybe live numbers might be...
It's actually a little more interesting. The MSOC Disclosure Tool was required after the McCleary decision. And the purpose that OSPI had was to force districts to explain if they were spending the MSOC money on salaries. And every single year, we have this deficit of the MSOC revenue to what we actually budget for expenditures.
Thank you.
Okay, Director McLean?
I was just confused about something. It's maybe something you addressed in a previous statement. But under expenditures, a federal stimulus for COVID-19 was listed. I don't understand why that would be there. Page 10. It's in other pages too, under expenditures. Page 10, the federal stimulus for COVID-19 is listed as expenditure.
Are you looking at the notes to the financial statement? Or are you looking at the actual financial statement? Page 10 has our, is our budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. It has the local revenues, state revenues, federal, and other. And then under expenditures, regular instruction, special education, vocational education, skill center, compensatory, federal stimulus. I see that COVID. I'm sorry. Took me a minute to see all the way down. So I don't have control over how they label this. The federal government did give us a lot of money for COVID. And I guess for reporting purposes, they wanted to put it all in there. We have other federal money that is not COVID, but I can't control the label that OSPI placed on this form.
So is it basically the mandated programs for COVID-19? Is that why it's in there?
We received federal stimulus because of the pandemic just to meet certain needs. It paid for masks. It paid for additional people to clean. And it paid for a multitude of things. I don't know why OSPI labeled it because we had more than COVID in there. In the notes to the financial statement, there's a couple of pages that I wanted to bring your attention to. But first of all, the notes to the financial statement, if you haven't read them, they really do explain how districts have to operate. And it explains how we have separate funds and what those funds are for and why we have them. It goes into some pieces of it ad nauseam. If you have trouble sleeping, it will help. If you have trouble sleeping, it will help. But I wanted to bring your attention specifically to some new ones that we've had in the past two years. On page eighteen, note number six, dealing with leases. This is the second year that we've had this in our notes that we had to report. We received little to no feedback from the auditors on whether this was right, this was wrong. So we have presented again the way we presented last year and hope that our auditors still like how we've presented it. Note seven, which is on page nineteen, is brand-new this year, subscription-based information technology arrangements. And yes, they did make an acronym out of that. This one, I would not have been able to do this note if we had not had the help from Tyler Starkovich and Mike Prime from our Information Technology Services Department. They had all of these subscriptions that we have. So they were able to give us all of that information. And then we have contracted with Debtbook to be able to do these entries and to make sure that we're going to be in compliance. We've done our own work on the side just to make sure that we understand what we're doing and that we can back into what Debtbook is giving us so that we're not just taking it all at face value. But this is very much a collaboration in order for us to be able to get that information on. The rest of the notes to the financial statement are going to take you through our fund balances. They're going to show you where we have our fund balances and the, where they show up in each of the funds. And it will also give you information that's about our retirement system and pensions, the pensions that we pay for. Ms. Goble, you may remember several years ago how I was very adamant that the notes to the financial statement stating how much was our responsibility of the state portion of the pension debt. It has gone down tremendously over the years. When it first started, if that debt had been required of us and we had to have paid it because originally it was like twenty-five million dollars, we would not have been a going concern if we'd had to pay it. The way that they have done it, and I really can't tell you what actuarial calculations they have done to bring it down, but the way that they have brought it down and the way that it's presented, I can actually, I can stand by what I've presented in the notes finally. Are there any questions on the notes to the financial statement?
Director Jensen?
Yeah, thank you, Vicky. Really helpful. And I did read through these because we share, you know, a financial background. I was curious, I didn't write the page number, but the line of credit, I think it's about two hundred and three thousand. How is that determined? That amount seems low for a budget our size.
Well, mainly because the lines of credit that we have, one is with Amazon, and that was thirty thousand dollars. We no longer need it. So sometime you will actually see an action come forward for us to cancel that line of credit. That was for us to be able to issue purchase orders, and Amazon has quit allowing purchase orders. The other lines of credit that we have, one is for Home Depot. We don't do a lot, and so we don't need a lot of credit there. The other one is US Bank, and that is the one that we use for our purchasing cards that our administrators have. We may need to revisit that and raise it. There are plenty of vendors that accept purchase orders that we can continue to use purchase orders. And I would recommend that we do use purchase orders because it doesn't take much when you have a whole bunch of credit card statements and then you have an administrator that is too busy to submit them, and then you're late. And then they cut off your credit card. And we've had that happen. That's part of the reason why we had the board policies that we've asked to have revised. So I'm not recommending that we raise our credit limits. I would let it go for a little bit longer and encourage people to use purchase orders.
Thank you. I didn't realize they were tied to individual vendors. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Vicky, I want to thank you. I feel like I'm constantly learning, and I appreciate all the time and effort and all the information that you present to us. So, and especially as we're coming up with budget cuts, I feel like we have lots of information to be able to go and to look at stuff and to really to continue to educate ourselves. So thank you. At this time, we are moving on to thirteen point zero one, Board Comments. Do I have anyone that would like to make a comment? Director Tesh?
Yeah, last year, they did a little promotion about Secret Santas, about kids' lunch accounts that were delinquent. And I just wanted to bring attention to, if you have a desire to be a Secret Santa, you can do it anonymously at any school. Or you can select a child, or you can select an amount that you want to donate to any child's account that is negative for their school lunches if you are in the giving mood.
Thank you, Director Tesh. Director Jensen?
Yeah, well, she's not here right now, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to Maggie for being proactive over at Home Connection and just getting her name out there and embracing her role as a student representative. So way to go, Maggie. And I saw a little postcard while I was reviewing things in my bag. And Michelle might know about this too, because I think you are a member of the Seroptimist. But I think they're having a luncheon early February called "The Power of the Purse." And some of that is opening up educational opportunities for young women, I believe. So I just thought maybe some of us might want to pencil that in our calendars.
Any other comments? I just want to say, it was really, I enjoyed having our meeting with Dr. Campbell and hearing all the things that are happening. It's exciting, and I am looking forward to, as the process continues and that we finally will have a strategic plan that we will be looking at. So thank you, and all the hard work that's going into that. And then also, I have the privilege tomorrow, I've been asked to come to hand-to-hand to read stories. So I am absolutely thrilled to be reading stories to four-year-olds. So looking forward to that. So at this time, if there's no other board comments, we'll move on to thirteen point zero two, Superintendent Comments.
I just want to congratulate all of you again for your positions and how exciting it is to have a new realignment of the board.
Moving on to fourteen point zero one, upcoming meetings. As Director Tesh has said, we will be meeting this Friday, December fifteenth, at three P.M. here in this building. We have a Cessent Agenda Only meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, at twelve P.M. via Google Meet. We are, have a regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, January eighth, twenty-twenty-four. And where does the time go? The Second Annual State of the Schools Event is scheduled for Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, at four-thirty P.M. at Oak Harbor High Schools. If there is no further business, I will adjourn the meeting, and then we will go into our board study session. Do I have any? I'd like to call the December eleventh meeting to closure. It is seven-ten P.M. Thank you very much.